Good evening. This is the Halifax Board of Selectment regular scheduled meeting for Tuesday, February 23rd. We are being taped by Area 58 to be broadcast on YouTube and cable.
And Area 58, community access, yes. The video of this means that it is considered an official public property.
There you go. I had a Charlie's mom. Okay. We will start the evening with the scheduled meeting.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have any additions to the agenda?
Just to make sure that you go in executive session at the end of the evening on union negotiations for all five bargaining units and Mr. versus Halifax case.
Okay.
No, I'm not going to make that a question.
Tom?
You do the minutes?
Would you like me to?
No, no, no. Yes.
Sure. Okay. Is everybody prepared to vote on the regular session for January 12th, regular session for February 9, and the executive session for February 9?
So far.
Do I have a motion?
I would move that we accept the meetings for January 12th and February 9th, February 9th executive session.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Tom?
I move to approve approval of the following warrants and commitments. Withholding warrant number 72 for $123,240.93. Venda warrant number 73 for $224,659.67. Ambulance commitment number 2A for $1,171.52. Ambulance commitment number 2B for $1,813. Ambulance commitment number 2C for $25,816. Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve payment of the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 74 for $338,369.36. Venda warrant number 75 for $202,623.30. Withholding warrant number 76, $124,176.14. Venda warrant number 77 for $12,017.34. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve payment of the following selectmen bills dated February 23rd, 2016. This must be insurance, KFDA, is that?
That was the insurance consultant.
Yeah, that's. And Merrill Corporation, $1,120.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Charlie, do we have a few minutes? Oh, no. Do we have any? Yeah. All right.
So, we got an announcement that Kyle Keough is going to be receiving his Eagle Scout ceremony on Sunday, April 3rd. We'll have a specific time. But we do have a letter of appreciation and the excellence certificate are usually signed in these cases.
Well, they've had more Eagle Scouts per capita than any unit in the country, I think, for the size of it.
No, yeah. We've held that record for quite a long time, actually.
He's actually from the central one.
Yeah. Yeah, first per capita.
I'm not available on April 3rd, but I can't attend the ceremony.
But just as a reminder, this is the general review table that I work. The benches are because of him and all the hours he put in.
I've been to several hundred hours. I think I've been to 21 of the establishments. Didn't help him any, but he did.
The board needs to inform Kim signing the reimbursement of this stormstorm. This is a grant from FEMA and NEMA. This is the first of three, revealing one. It was done over at school, it was done by the other departments, and then the storm removal operation, big check. So we'll get two more of these down online. I talked to many people from over the part. This is the first one for $4,258.16.
And so I already signed that, so we need to.
We're sorry.
I need a motion to affirm my signature.
She wants you to sign?
No, to affirm my signature.
She's already signed it. She signed it in before the signature for the chair, allow the chair to sign it before the board.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Howard East Classics, I had to go back from the playing board. I had talked with them and the ZBA about if we need to go back for any various issues or special permits or site review. The playing board has said yes, they want to be back for by site plan. I've sent a letter to him to have a copy of it. Go over to the playing board, see that he should be talking to Terry to settle the appointment. Work out what exactly they need to do. For all of the class two lessons, we do have a note. For board health, we must receive music events. We're getting paid.
Is that where it's called mustard seed?
Well, mustard seed.
Mustard seed?
Yeah. Seed. Well, I don't know if it's a daily event, but it's mustard seed music and sports promotions.
I'm probably tamed to it.
We can talk to.
I'm going to suggest that. There's mustard seed.
Haven't seen that in a place like that. If they're aware of it.
Oh, is that what it's called? Let's ask the uncles to be honest.
I have. The reference for mustard seeds, I don't know which test, but it's a lot of mustard seed.
Yes. And then he.
Could you have a notice about a subdivision here in on March 17th? This is making up something called Lawrence Frame Estates off Powell Road. For some reason, we do have an interest fund, but we have that. If we go to that, maybe it's not a chapter 40B, it's not a multi-pandemic, it's a small, whatever, the role these days is something. We're doing the dance in the lane and more drive here tonight, that's a copy of the plan and such. Sort of like budgeting, I think that would obviously happen because that was a couple weeks ago. I'll learn about that later. Scott Clasins is trying to be in contact with Larry Mayo about having his client meet with the future selectmen's meeting about his interest in having additional dates for the horse shows. And both Larry and myself think that would be a good thing for, even if it's simply courtesy, to have him come in. I can explain when it's a date or not. This does not mean the board has to say yes that night. The board could say, we need to still see the ZBA because Karen Council 15 years ago said that before afternoon. Also, the board might want to point out to him in whatever letter saying, hi, you have an appointment, that we also are now having a discussion about the music event, maybe for two days, that we have the alcohol problems in that we've had all served that venue without permits and also challenge of Mr. Cost and advertising additional dates without being commissioned in the town for us. I mentioned all those things in the letter, but surely you land in for immediate board on the 8th.
See him over in the background, huh?
Yeah. We don't need to get into today. That's fine. I mean, I think that's something we need to make an appointment with you on.
Yeah. That's fine.
Yeah.
Sit, come up and discuss.
Yeah. So we'll do that on the 8th. That's not part of this agenda, so we would need to post that and put some thoughts together. So we'll make an appointment with you from March 8th.
7:45.
7:45, does that work for you?
Yep.
Perfect.
Recycling, let's see. We have an agreement to sign with, how do we find that protection for mattress recycling? Two copies in this place, Kim won't sign it.
Do I have a motion to approve, to allow the chair to sign?
Still no. Second?
All those in favor?
And another grant, this one is for stormwater. This is through the board of health, and we were working with the camp again, sort of working on stormwater, especially around Monpotsipod. Two copies of this, and in this case, also it's a Kim signature.
I would move to allow the chair to sign the stormwater grant. Two grants.
Do you have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Fire chiefs notify us that firefighters Nathan Jones and Wayne Fowler will be deported to the Lake Detroit story on March 3rd. We're going to set up a swearing-in ceremony for selectmen's meeting on March 22nd at 7:35. Okay? We'll have that before.
Swearing in after children? Yes. Does that even affect the.
Yes.
Immediately or at the swearing in?
No, March 3rd is when it goes in. I think in terms of the swearing in, it's ceremonial, not legal. I think they simply needed more time to have everybody come in when they were coming. I don't know at some point whether you want to talk about the repo dispatch.
Yeah. Why don't we do that after our September 12th? We have another three months.
Just a couple of things on Monpotsipod. Earlier this month, Central Clinton County Water District Commission issued a order stating that should be no diversion from Monpotsipod, Brockton, Stray, and made first, which is a month earlier than what's allowed in this legislative legislation. I'm not sure what the legal effects of that's going to be, but see how that plays out if they issue that order. We'll also work on an administrative consent order between the Department of Environmental Protection and the City of Brockton continues, as to what things are going to be required to the city, see how that plays out. And Tammy gets sent a note to the City of Brockton requesting for the mayor's recommendation that we send this letter in, making the request to fund various Monpotsipod projects during fiscal '17.
Are we going to talk about the Tom Colter issue for the.
For the legislation?
And then we'll do another section that we will talk about month on, say perhaps, again after our 7:45. So we just need to give you, we had a conference call with DEP on Friday, so we just want to give you a quick update on some of the things.
And I do have copies of the current Silver Lake regional school budget. It's not really affordable for the town. Not going to go into specifics about all line items in it, but what it would amount to for the operating assessment would be an increase of eight and a half percent, which basically would blow our butt out of water to use up everything that we've got on the hill for everything else, including elementary school and that.
That's what I'd rather have, is that, that's on top of a little bit of the.
Yeah. I mean, this is eight and a half percent just for Silver Lake. So $350,000. And just another comment on fiscal '17 budget. At this point, health insurance premiums are expected to go up somewhere between 12 and 20 percent. I'll have a better sense of that next Thursday after Mayflower Municipal Health Group's steering committee. Problem is, not there yet, there are no good choices. It's either A, use up much of the reserves, so that you don't have any reserves, and if you want the group to continue as a viable entity, you need some reserves, or you are going to have to pay through the nose for health insurance. Neither of those for many communities seem to be good choices, but we'll see how it plays out.
I think we're really lucky that Charlie, you're so versed in this area, and he's really paying attention and trying to figure out ways that it's the best management of the Mayflower group surplus and making sure that we aren't just kicking the can down the road, that we are, you know, making it realistic. I mean, we knew for five years we had a stable cost with health insurance, which was nice, but we knew at some point that would.
And finally, it's inevitable that it survives.
Yeah. So I have some mixed feelings about health surplus.
And I think, you know, after we go through this, both between what they're made decisions are making and we get through town meeting, I think, depending on what happens, I think the similar we're going to have to take a serious look at whether we want to go to one of the alternatives that would include, I don't want to go to GIC, but you have to take a look at it. There's Maya, who trains its own health insurance program, but there are restrictions on that in terms of the illegal offer of Blue Cross Blue Shield, and a third of our people are with Harvard Pilgrim. GIC, the problem is that their major choices are Tufts. Tufts doesn't have a very good presence in southeastern Massachusetts. There, I believe, is another group of.
I already have to check. Particularly the retirement fund from the GM, that's one of my choices.
Can I ask you a question? When you say 12%, are you talking about 12% across the board or for the town? Does that include the employees' contributions or?
Yeah. I mean, 12% of.
Teaching.
I just wanted to clear that. Yeah. But let's say, let's say a family premium right now grosses $2,000, so the employee's paying $1,000, and the town's paying $1,000. If it goes up 12%, it's going to be.
Eleven.
It's going to be 2,400, so 1,200 for each of us.
It's a significant increase.
You said 12% off.
Correct. 20% would be 2,400, 12% would.
No, I was saying just.
Yeah. You're right.
Yeah. Because that's the number that's.
I just wanted my math to be right.
Good. Glad your math is better than mine.
No, but that's the number that, you know, we budget it based on, yeah.
But the 12% is what we budgeted. It's unlikely to be 12%. That would basically eliminate all reserves. I can't see, we'll see how it plays out. I don't see that happening.
We budgeted 20 in our NCM expression.
Well, we now have budgeted 20. We originally budgeted 12. The other thing is, in terms of the employees, obviously, whatever pay increase goes into effect, whatever, 1% to, they're going to be losing money. Anybody who's on the town's side will be losing money next year.
And then listening to Silver Lake's budget request is right, it won't even be that big.
Okay. So it is a, it's 7:47, we're a little late, but.
I'm good. I'm glad to see you guys.
We're here to talk about.
Mudfest first.
Oh, we're going to talk about two things.
Yeah. Let's not swing around.
All right. Let's start with Mudfest. I'm with a successful program.
Okay.
How are you?
Don't tell me.
It's fun. No, Mudfest has been pretty successful.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I didn't know if I could hold a card.
What is it?
On view. We had an agreement.
From Mudfest?
Well, we're talking Mudfest.
Oh, we're talking Mudfest.
That was for her.
Yeah. Let's talk about it. Okay. Let's talk Mudfest. So do we have a date for Mudfest?
We do. Father's Day, June 19th, I'm hoping.
Well, I know the hop perhaps is not that day. Which is a great.
I try to make sure nothing of that day.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. So tell us a little bit about it. Are you going to have about the same?
Approximately about the same. I'm going to add ATVs to it. So that's an insurance thing, more to help kind of see what kind of safety you find with any of that. I don't know. I think the last thing.
Do you think that that would require an additional detail for fire? Did you talk to the fire chief about that?
No. I did give him one of these and told him about it and all that. And like I always say, I'm always open for.
Yeah. Do you think that there's a higher risk of tipping over?
You're going to use the same PIS?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I don't have an issue with it as long as the insurance company doesn't, you know, it's, I don't think that's, you know, my call initially. I mean, if the insurance company wants to cover for that, that's great.
Same hours? I was actually going to see if I can have an extension of a grace period. I don't know how that works. It's like a two-hour thing, like schedule it for this long until like 5 o'clock.
Okay.
But can I have the permit until 7:00 if I need to use it? Does that work like?
How does that work? Like, why would you go over two hours? Are you thinking that you'll have more?
We ran into, we had more of the bigger trucks, and we ran long into for our eliminations. So our last set of trucks, they only had one run, and that was it. We had to stop them, and everybody was like, oh.
Well, if you run into 7:00, at what time am I? Everybody's going to be out of it. All the trucks out of it. That's going to make the damage going to the neighborhood a little later than our.
Gets dark.
June stays, I was thinking June stays a little lighter, a little longer.
Yeah, but if you go a few hours, you break down.
Yeah. Once everybody's gone, I do that to fall.
Chief, do you think?
I don't know how that works. I was just, I don't think I'd use the two hours, but it would be comfortable.
Want a cushion?
Yes.
Do you think that there's an issue with coverage?
No, no. We've always been able to work out the detail issue. That shouldn't be an issue, you know, on my side. As far as getting people out of there, they're usually pretty quick by the end of the day. They don't hang around very long, so the impact wouldn't, I don't think it'd be too bad down there. But again, what's called.
How would we know when and if you're going to need it, actually?
You won't know until that day.
Yeah. It'll be to that day.
You're going to wait. We don't want to wait until 5:00, so I need a couple more hours, or you're going to wait if notified at the police department with the affiliates.
Yeah. We're very close to those guys as we go, anyhow. They're actually with me side by side, you know, when you get those trucks through, you know.
I have concern for the neighbors, too, as long as they're notified.
We sent, well, we sent a note to all the folks living on Hemlock. I don't know if any of them are here, but we notified them about the possible extension of hours.
Okay. I just wanted to show that there was some.
So the board could check, ask if there's anybody in the audience who's from Hemlock Lake.
I don't think there is.
And we've walked the road and not given them all my personal information. If there was any kids or concerns, contact me personally and stuff.
Yeah. You can notify, and I know.
Yeah. I'm just making sure that they're on their own, you know.
That was a good point.
Well, I think we ought to set definitely a time around 2:00, so if you feel you're going to go to 7:00, in fact, we'd allow you to have those to notify officers and those.
Exactly. Everybody has a copy of this. I believe the chief got a copy of this and fire got a copy of that, and I indicated like the possibility of, you know, and so far it's.
You won't really have any idea until people start registering, right?
Until they, yes, to see what's happening, what was expected. Everybody's building their trucks better, so it's that now. Before it was like, okay, he got one run, he broke, or he got stuck, you know? Now everybody's building a little tougher, a little stronger, so they go a few more times. It's like, oh, you know? And, you know, I think it's a great.
I talked to people up in Worcester, brotherhoods up there, and they did talk about the Mudfest town yesterday, and some of them all over.
I love it. I just, I'm just still in awe of how it's taking off. Wanted to grow, and I can't thank you guys enough for helping to do it.
So I guess the morning situation would be the same. Slow traffic, you want to be ahead of time. I know that you can put that on your Facebook page, which is a nice reminder to people that there are residents that are affected by this. I don't have an issue with the extension.
No, I don't either. Nobody seems to be.
As long as the notification is in.
In to talk about.
It's a swing in time, because I don't want to be at the last minute, you know, of what happens.
On the paper, like, my thing was is like, when they post it for the fire, the police have them, assuming that they're going to work until 7:00.
Yes.
And if we shut down earlier, if that, how's it work?
How's that work, though? Because we have to.
Well, yeah. We'll have to talk about that. We can, we can figure out the fine details.
Excellent.
I don't know how that works.
If somebody decided, I'm thinking that they're going to get the hours, then we cut them short.
Right. I don't typically post that till a week before anyway, so we'll have an idea about what the registrations are. I can give a, we can work that out. I'm not too worried about it. We can make it happen.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion today to approve the?
Yes.
Yes. So do we have a?
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mudfest, Father's Day. That's a great day to choose.
Father's been here for you, right?
Yep.
No, no, it was a great day for the dads to go with.
I think so. Give the kids a.
Teach them how to drive reckless? Come on.
They already know that. They got that done.
Should I just stay here?
Yes, please. Stay right here.
Oh, no.
Okay. So is this called the mustard seed?
This is, these are the young fellows right here.
You, you see right here.
They work with the military, and they do, they actually on foot, cleaning up sleeping beds for homeless vets and all that stuff. Mr. Reden here, he.
My name is Brian Reden. I founded Zeus One Marine 14 years ago. What we do is we go up and search and rescue homeless veterans. Started off the civilian population, I'm a retired medic in the Marine myself. We started with ATV, started collecting backpacks, holding some savages. Community awareness study, make us grow, it was quick, it was really quick. We have small satellite offices, as in homebound offices, 16 of them between here and Chicago at this point, pulling in information on what we're doing as far as veteran housing. We're following closely with state, we work with the governor himself and the mayor. What we've been proposing for 18 months and doing all the research on is we're opening up a facility in Lake Billucup in Inor Cogro called One Marine Way. I can go out and register 6,000 veterans from here to California, but I have nowhere to hook them. There's a lot of money out there, there's a lot of headway being made right now. The housing is being provided. It was supposed to be done by 2015. I have a problem with that. Some weekends I have anywhere from 8 to 80 volunteers spread out from here to Nevada burg. We find them, we register, my registration process. They take all the information I possibly can on them. Name, face, last known address, last service date, if I can get their social, under HIPAA we follow it and find them. If they want me to find family members. All this is going on while I'm trying to find a place to hook them. I have nothing. Working with the state, we don't even have to go there. It's like firing a BB at a freight train. I can't make any headway. If you make their promises, I can't get it out of them. Now, what we're doing. The Halifax Music Fest, the Veterans Festival itself, we've lined up 200 bands to choose from. The past 18 months, I've been paying music professionals to go and listen to these bands and vet them, vet them, find out what their crowd atmosphere is like. Do they provide their own security? Are they professional? How do they dress? Do they draw the crowd in? We're kind of proud. That's what we've been doing as far as the research. Concert venues that have been pulled off from small to what we're doing midsize to regular River Fest, that was a nightmare for local security up in that area. We did all those studies. There was a problem bringing a bunch of different bands in, and all different kinds of venue personnel and clients all listen.
Followed.
All the followers. That was the key element on us going up and doing research on how to do this, how to All the followers. That was the key element on us going up doing research on how to do this, how to pull it off properly. We're at the end of that right now. We have a choice on Fieldstone Farms, Scott Clausen's, or Marshfield Fairgrounds. Why I'm choosing Halifax first. There's not much in the Halifax area as far as draft in the community. You have small bluegrass festivals. This is a two-day event for around six thousand people each day. That's the potential. I can close it off at six thousand people for two days. Now, the bands are set. The headliners are still being chosen from Steven Tyler. We have lists that go on and trail them. Yes, this is a presentation.
Steve Martin.
Steve Martin.
Really?
Yeah, the Lieutenant Dan Band. So we're in the upper echelon as far as what we're doing for headlines, one per day. I have a ten million dollar liability and policy already in place. I have forty barbecue vendors and two hundred local vendors that'll be onsite selling beads, T-shirts. Whatever they want to do is their profit. I'm bringing the community together for two days. The barbecue people, when they come in, I understand the logistic nightmare behind this. Believe, as a retired Marine, I've played all those games. I know everything you're about to say. Not everything. But as far as the logistical steps on the board of health, how I have to sit with the chief. My Marines that I served with are summer heads of the Anti-Terrorism Task Force. That's a big thing with us right now. Before I presented this, I had to find out the ins and outs on an all-veteran-specific music event at this day and age. It changed. It was an evolution every six months from eighteen months ago. Now this is pretty serious. The security teams that I've actually been vetting, I'm turning them over to the Anti-Terrorism Task Force before I give that list to the chief. They're gonna be vetted completely, these companies, on whether or not they're trained to scan crowds and find out, is there a problem in this crowd? There will be drones in the area with facial recognition sensors. Those companies will be vetted in and of themselves before even interviewing their owners. Are you secure enough to run a facility secured with six thousand people there? Are these people gonna be safe from anything and everything? I'm gonna put unmarked people inside these crowds that are trained, that I've served with overseas. Why? Because they're not gonna touch it. It's a hands-off policy. But we can see things. We're trained above and beyond what's in the local areas. And I'm not taking away from anybody behind me at all. Proficiency is key on pulling this off and everybody's safety, profits. Profits, of course, the land rental. We're supporting the growth of MIFest. Why? Because it's reintegration of the community. I'm gonna start here in Halifax. I just want more. I want people to have something to look for every single year. The first year, yes, it's gonna benefit my facility. I'm gonna take thirty-three thousand out of the entire profits and purchase some of the buildings. When I purchase this land.
Thirty-three thousand?
Thirty-three thousand.
And you just purchased for a dump?
It's a dump. Now, I'm renting, I'm purchasing the ten acres. I'm renting the buildings from William Scotsman. We're gonna do five hundred veterans every eighteen months on a flow-through process. It's reintegration. Anywhere from re-education to finishing a degree, common courtesies. They'll be educated for eighteen months. When the area is secure, and I say secure, that we have a constant control of the veteran population, what's here and what's about to come. My concern before I move these buildings to the West Coast are that I have a constant control of what's flowing out of the military. It can happen. I'm in twelve, we're working on sixteen states, trying to get this going. I'm starting here. After we move those facilities, that ten acres will be consistent housing for veterans and civilians. It'll be half and half. Five for veterans, five for civilians. That's where I bring the state and the federal government in to fund that. That's where I'm going with this. It keys off with the music festival. I understand how uncomfortable you are with me throwing twelve thousand potential people at you over two days. Think of what I'm gonna give your community. I will give you control over all finances inside of this. You will have complete visibility on every ticket purchase. All the money will flow into emergency account. You'll have complete control over that. You'll see every penny that goes into this whole event and how we spend it. The next year, you guys can have control over it. It's not gonna be to fund me next year. What do you guys wanna use the funds for? Do you need forty, eighty grand to do something? Make the presentation to me. It's your festival. It's in your town. What do you want the money for? Once my Marine is off and running, I don't need this festival.
Choice of ideas.
It's reintegration of community. There's no community element left in any community anymore.
Can I back the tour bus up a little bit?
Right.
Do you, have you ever done a concert on your, like, have you ever, like, actually had a concert like this before?
Yes, we did one with my mentor, the Machine Gun Creators, Sam Childers in Pennsylvania.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to see.
Yes, we pulled off a one-point-seven-five million dollar raffle last August with him and his organization.
And how many people attended that concert? Was it over two days?
Forty-nine hundred for the first day and it was about, it was, it turned into the church festival on the Sunday. That's what it always does.
Okay.
So the flow-through, the constant was about six hundred, but throughout the day maybe two thousand.
Okay.
Just with barbecue.
All right, good. And I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, please.
I just wanted to see what your experience was in doing this.
Well, I do have a good question too. And thanks for serving.
Thank you.
My biggest issue would be parking. It wasn't that the area that you're gonna hold us in, it's dead enough room to actually do what you're talking about doing, but I'll interfere with the next door neighbors in exchange of that. Six thousand people is a lot of people.
Yes.
We've discussed it with Mr. Clausen. We've walked the land and all that. We're using the back part in between. We have, we figured that we'd be able to.
The events that Mr. Clausen pulls off with ESPN and that horse shows, the back area alone will hold six thousand cars.
Nothing, nothing encroaching the front or.
And that's the traffic that we're used to for that particular event, Mr. Clausen?
Yes, yeah.
So you're used to having six thousand people come to your?
I wouldn't say it's six thousand.
How many, like, when you have your major force event?
One of my August events, we probably have three to four thousand.
Okay, in one day a day.
If you remember back when New England Dressage rented the facility, they had.
With Olympic training?
Excuse me?
With Olympic triathletes?
Yes, they had between five and six thousand at that.
And you remember the traffic? Was there a traffic issue? I don't remember.
No, it went very smoothly. Yeah, very smoothly.
Okay, go ahead. Do you mean to, will you finish with your?
You've got some, some big-name personalities potentially coming to this. Six thousand people sounds like a lot of people, but based on the types of people I'm hearing may be there, six thousand suggests to me that that may not be the most.
That's being conservative.
That's being conservative, yeah. That you, what provisions? I mean, if you start getting seven, eight thousand, and repeat, or two thousand who can't get in, I mean, are we gonna be prepared for that? Secondly, one of the issues I have with the site, I think the site's large enough to accommodate it, is that it's a porous site. I mean, there is no way to control people coming onto this site. There's any number of accesses from around the property.
Exactly.
So, you know, security is wonderful, but, you know, when you contrast it to marshfield fairgrounds, it's at least enclosed.
Yes.
You know, I, I, my immediate reaction is that that's a more appropriate site.
Exactly.
Not that I'm trying to push it out of town.
Right. Well, with Lou, like, I'm sorry, that's rough. But all of the military people and personnel that he knows, thousands of them, and then I brought in a friend of mine that he works with security and stuff like that. We have basically negotiated and discussed. We can lock all exits. I personally know how to get in and out of there because of being in that area.
Yeah.
So I can absolutely be able to say, here, here, here are trouble areas and all that. I think we'll be able to.
Well, I'm familiar with it too, and, you know, I know that it's relatively porous.
Yeah.
And I got a little concerned about that.
Right. As far as the area itself, the topographical maps, maps that we've studied, military and civilian proved that mathematically what I know, that I can seal that area off. I can't put unmarked people inside those, with no weapons at all, just in those wooded areas and pinpointed access areas where nobody can flow in from the outside. Now, from the streets, I'm gonna turn over all my information in the next couple of weeks to the chief behind me. He's gonna have direct contact with the DEA and ATF that have been doing all the background checks on everybody that's working with us. The ATTTF, Mr. Newton, is a retired Marine himself. He worked with me personally overseas. He's gonna be the chief's liaison to all three of those organizations. As far as the security and the topographical maps, I want the chief to sit in on those meetings personally with my military personnel and explain how we can secure this, because I know that these areas chiefs now lately, with all the ATTTF training that they're receiving, I know they can pull this off. Tied hand in hand with active military, you know, personnel, we can pull this off. If I can secure it from the street, I can definitely secure it from the woods.
So you talk about six thousand people each day. Is there a potential of it being more? Is that what you think that you can sell the tickets?
No. That's what we're working on right now. That's the max, because I don't wanna.
It's gotta be previous purchase tickets.
Exactly.
Okay.
The tickets have to be previously purchased, and you'll receive from your ticket a scannable bracelet at, when you pull it in your car, they'll search, not, whatever the chief does, the cars will be searched, again, under the ATTTF because it's a veteran facility, a veteran function. I wanna make sure that everything is secure. Coming onto the property, it has to be secure. The call and the problems we had in Pennsylvania when we were pulling off some of these concerts is it was veteran-specific. The state police had problems with a veteran-specific Halifax Veterans Music Festival. It's going to draw something. And I or somewhere that we're doing a festival for all veterans. We have problems with that nowadays. That's why I waited eighteen months and did everything I could to try and cover the bases before I presented it to you. So don't think that. My key element here is the security of everybody listening to music that day. Everybody.
But it benefits veterans. It's not just veterans that are attending the concert.
Right, right. The VA is involved. They're gonna supply quiet ones. We have other facilities and other nonprofits that are working with us that are gonna take care of other elements inside of this. So it's not just my Zeus. There's a lot of other founders and CEOs that are working in the background to take care of us.
So you topographic maps, you said the chief will be involved in looking at that?
Yes, as far as, chief, as far as anything and everything that's security-based, before I made this presentation, I, from Quantico to Yuma, anybody that was professional as far as locking down any kind of gridded area, I approached them. And I only approach the people that I personally serve with, always trained under. Now, these guys have taken on positions with local, that they're authorities like you. I want them, when they come down on the next few meetings, I'd like to sit with you so you can meet them, and they can tell you what they think of the local area. If the chief says no, and the security can't take place, and you guys say yes, I'm going with the chief. If he's not comfortable with any security aspect.
Look, the chief says no, we're not.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's a given, but the whole thing behind this, you have the music, the food.
He cares.
The atmosphere, right. It's the security that, that I've been worried about. That's why instead of a six-month planning process, we're eighteen months deep. I'm going into twenty. And we keep rolling.
So this won't happen until two thousand and twenty?
No, we're at two thousand and sixteen.
Oh, okay.
We have the bands booked.
Yeah, one month.
July, sixteen to seven.
So you have, what's your, you have Steven Tyler booked?
Steven Tyler is broken from his original Aerosmith band, is doing country. He's one of our potential headliners on Saturday.
He's doing country?
He's amazing.
Really?
Yeah, that's what we said.
Yeah, a little twang.
Yeah, the Lieutenant Dan Band, that's a heavy potential. The Steve Martin Band, he's got his own little music thing going.
So he's signed, who's, who's major than sign that would be your big loss?
All right, there's a right now unsigned but signed Steven Tyler for Saturday. That goes no further than.
Well, there it is.
Now, while we're working on full up the Sunday program.
On me, right. I'm the Lieutenant Dan Band.
He brings in an element, I don't know if anybody has ever followed what Harrison East does as far as veterans and veterans. He brings a whole element that is, is perfect. That could be twenty-two hundred tickets worth of sales right there for both days. That's where we're going. That's why a headline reached there. There's nine headlines we approached. Timing isn't working for all of them. They said, yes, next year we'll do it if we can book it this year. That's a promise for next year. I'm asking us for a shot at this.
So we've got, so how long will it take to organize everything here? Because I'm actually not really like that. But we almost had it myself.
As far as organization and putting everything together as far as.
And when do you think you're gonna have all your plans together?
If you guys would like to review it, I have everything at the printer ready for release on Monday. Everything.
Well, I have a few more questions.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's gonna take months for us to get this thing announced.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty spectacular. It's big and, you know, if you think about it, like, the key thing, the reason why I'm sticking with security is, you know, what's going on in the world and the terrorists and stuff like that. He just wants to make everybody feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, it seems initially over the top, but I understand why it needs to be over the top. But my initial reaction was, what?
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then with the traffic and the security and everything.
I, I, this may not even apply, but we have some issues about dates on this particular site. Do you know what? Do, is this falling under that special permit for dates of shows on this particular program? That this is outside of that, correct? I just wanted to clear that up in case there was some issues, because we do have some other issues on this site.
Okay, so the date of this particular event would be?
Sixteenth to seventh.
Of July. And can we get any specifics about here?
Yes.
Um, there you go. Um, let's talk about.
We're proposing a beer license only. We want to go with malt. We're balancing it right now. We have a couple of weeks worth of conversations we have to work out.
What's the difference between malt and beer? I know I'm trying.
Yeah, it results in, most of them.
No hard liquor onsite. I don't want any of that problems. That's already gonna erase from this. Beer, definitely. Now, we've had some requests as far as our sponsorship programs. What are they gonna be provided for if they give fifteen thousand dollars to sponsor this, this event? There's certain setup areas on Mr. Clausen's property that allow us to elevate crowd members. We've already set those up as VIPAs. For fifteen thousand, they'll get forty seats. Under this, what I'd like to know into the wine specifics is, I partnered with the Venus family and with Greek family, great food. They do little cakes, wines. They're just, they're a great store up there. Great family. Inside this VIP, VIP experience, I'd like to do that deli, Montelios, little cake type experience. The upper echelon, if you pay for this, I'd like you to be treated as if you got that VIP experience. Hence the wine. Inside these packages, doing the research, what Mr. Clausen is sold alone, seventy to seventy-five percent of them are females inside of the VIP area. Hence the wine. We've worked out per bottle price. That takes under a different permit and licensure than the beer that we're approaching. I've approached all life insights, and what they said is that they'll donate, donate, that's a big problem here, is two trucks. One by, one by light with the kegs on the trucks. They backed the two trucks in, disconnect, so we have two box trucks with the kegs already on board. We're still trying to work out how this beer garden thing will actually work. There's six thousand people running around. It's a nightmare for me right now. Do I wanna do it? It's a country fest? Yes. Will the crowd expect it? Yes. It's something we have to work out. We have time to do so.
You're gonna have some logistical issues. If you're talking about platforms and stuff, you get some.
Yes.
You know, they're gonna have to be working the building department, stand for, have professionals sign off on them, or whatever the building inspector thinks is.
Yes, we are.
We're gonna do twenty-two.
That's the building inspector.
Yeah.
It's twenty-five thousand dollars by itself.
We hired Mustard Seed for staging. They do professional events like this. They set up music events and events.
Is that why it's called Mustard Seed?
That's the, the venue. That's a nonprofit organization I hired with the bands and the setup and all. That's what they do.
What is this event gonna be called for advocacy?
Halifax Veterans Music Festival.
The other thing.
At Nova Scotia.
No. Halifax Veterans.
We're a small town. We have limited resources.
Yes, exactly.
Vetting the food vendors alone is gonna be a horrific process.
Exactly.
We've got one health agent who's gonna have to vet all these people and document them that they've been there through their food safety courses.
Yes.
And, you know, okay, I don't know if the tips program applies in this particular thing as well. So, you know, if you were to start with this thing, it would have to be almost immediately with, with the board of health, that's true.
Yes. I hired a local barbecue company that does a lot of these events. He does the bluegrass festival. And I had him head up the food vendors. Now, he's, I know nothing about what their, their licenses are, so that's why I brought him in and had him head that up. I've asked him to put packages together for each one of the vendors. Those are gonna be ready, let's say, mid-March for me. He's vetted a couple so far. There are three or four that do, you know, outside events. He's going to their events to sample their foods, see the draw again. Once he's done with that, I'll put those packages together.
They're gonna have to present their, their food service.
Yes, sir.
System. I mean, the health agent, I'm not even sure if she can, well, it may be something better.
It may be something that she needs to, to just.
Or to, I'm not.
To hire a contractor specifically for this.
I, I just wanted to emphasize the fact that this is a process to.
Also, another thing will be the sanitary conditions. Are we gonna provide bathroom facilities for us?
Yes, I have two sanitary can companies that have already put their bids in, and we've broken it down to two finalists. There'll be fourteen hundred cans and six onsite roamers, the big trucks we're pumping. Nine wash stations, they say strategically placed throughout the scenario. They have people that will monitor it and onsite cleaners besides the trucks in case there's any problems for staffing for toilet paper and, and things of such. We're at about fifty-eight hundred dollars for that alone. Just for the, that's per day, so that it's a complete clean. And again, they have to be tied in with you.
So they're cleaning them at the end of the day?
Uh, throughout the day. Yeah, throughout the day consistently.
So is there a block that they're closing off to clean?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, they're gonna set up different blocks. Females will have their own. Those will be monitored. Any more block will close.
Indicate, number indicate.
Yes, sir. Yep.
So everything that we've talked about tonight, you say you've got a preliminary.
Yeah, it's done.
Polls and all this information you gave us tonight is already in writing?
Yes.
I see a head going, bobblehead.
That's the vice president.
No, it's mine.
Yes, I'm on paper ready.
Because my, my biggest interest, of course, is the security. That's what my shit is. More than anything else, make sure it's secure and that we're not having traffic problems.
Yes.
Coming to.
Well, we're fine with security, just working with the government officials. It is evolving, and they're evolving. My business plan for security as things come up on their end, and we don't know about.
Okay, so let's, let's think of it in different stages. What are the things that we need answered? Like, obviously, traffic flow would be huge issue, but knowing that we've had that kind of I am going to that location, but we can talk to the police chief about, you know, his gallons or his.
And the fire chief.
Right, for rescue, for life safety.
You know, that's what I'm saying. I know the chief is, the chief fires in security stuff, but I think the, the fire chief probably should do.
Our team handles this probably isn't gonna cut it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
On July would be all. The other thing that concerns me a little bit, I know you can sell tickets, but that doesn't mean people aren't gonna try to get in.
Exactly.
And, you know, you can end up with a couple thousand people. I'm, I'm making this up.
Exactly, no, right.
That's the worst.
I mean, you have some kind of a plan to mitigate that problem.
Yes, contingency plans on topic. Contingency plans worked out by security and that works for that. Is it perfect? No, it's impossible to make that happen.
Well, not perfect, but you have to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I'm saying you at least have to put it in the message.
Yes.
Right, but we, we have to make sure that our chief is comfortable, and so that's where it starts and that's where it ends, is with our chief. Because he knows our community and what we can handle, because if we have other emergencies going on and, you know, we, we don't know that we'll have all this personnel. We might have to get personnel from other agencies to assist us, knowing that we, we need to know what we think our security needs to be for our town.
Absolutely. There was, there was a question about military, like, basically volunteer security or anything like that. I was not sure how that works or anything like that, like, anybody certified for, or anything like that with the military.
I mean, obviously, there's a, there's a, there's a lot that's gonna go into this. I think first step is that Mr. Reden ought to stop in and see me sometime in the next few days, weeks, whenever it's convenient. Get a copy of his plans on paper. We'll take a look at it, try to work through some of, or all of these issues, you know, when we get to them. And, and take it one step at a time. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big event to try to wrap your head around all at once right now.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
We've not a lot of time.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to break it up and, and, you know, each, each little section squared away as we move on, so. If, if, again, if the board thinks it's the right thing for the town, then we'll, we'll make it happen.
Okay, so let's sort of just go through, obviously, police, it needs to be involved. The building inspector needs to be involved, board of health. Fire would need to be involved to have details for paramedics standing by. Can we think of any other town department that would, like, a highway department would need to be involved, water? Can you think of any other department that we would need to? Can you think of any other department that we would need to, to now, now have to sort of?
Well, it would be a weekend, so March.
They would like to, they need details, they need to have details on the street.
Plus July, though.
The police said, well, Phil's storefront, yeah, those stone ones up front. They said, you have to have the local, the local police want to have, the address, they have to have a state police.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're telling you that?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. All right, good.
We've got a lot of conversations.
Sequels have no authority on mic streams.
That's what I'm saying.
They can't block, they turn.
Well, Charlie's doing it now. That was about.
I've never turned your back on you.
We have a lot of conversations going on, so, yeah, what, what Bob was talking about is our Board of Health, you know, and as Charlie explained to, the limitations of her time and perhaps having to have an outside agency be paid for to assist us in getting all this paperwork done. That, that seems to be, beside security, the most complicated part.
Yeah, I had another thing, if, if we're trying to move this along, one of my concerns is the outdoor seating, I have no idea what you're speculating, what you're planning. I'm not gonna do the calculations on it, you're gonna have to have an engineer provide you with plans for the site, showing you what seating. Your eyes, the fire chief's gonna have to obviously go over it and conquer.
All the schematics.
All the schematics, anything has to do with, are your barbecue pits, are we propane, we got canisters, do we have open fire pits?
Right.
What's going on? All that stuff's gotta be talked to the fire chief and myself.
Excellent.
Okay.
I'll get them all ready.
Okay, so, um, on the timeline, like, what's the date that you need a formal approval from this board to go forward? Like, is it, are we gonna do a, an agreement with a contingency of based on working out these things? How do we wanna?
The big thing is the, how much time are you gonna need to notify the groups that you possibly have down there, where they can definitely move their equipment and stuff in, so. I probably would think that hopefully you'll have a decision made by end of March.
No, I think we, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, it may be.
Does that work for you?
I was thinking Saint Patrick's Day, if we could hit Saint Patrick's Day with a contingency, then I can put that twenty-five thousand down in advance.
Okay, let's, let's chime in, Charlie.
Well, we just have one meeting between.
Yeah, so we need you to come back.
Well, I think it's in four months up there, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think you're gonna have.
It'll, it'll happen quick, he's been great, he's been great on topic.
Where are you from, Mr. Redding?
I'm only from Russia.
Russia, what's that?
Uh, so.
This would be way away from here.
Wait, Ron?
I have some questions on the amusement, uh, too, Russell.
I have not heard back from them at all, so.
I mean, I think that throws an extra wrench into it.
Yeah.
I think if we remove it, it takes the stress off you and everybody else, because that's definitely, there's gonna be an incident, some.
It wasn't, it wasn't gonna be the big Ferris wheel and all that.
Oh, it still, it still brings it up, another whole new code, another inspection, state inspection.
State, yeah.
Yeah.
State inspection.
Definitely an extra mention.
No, we can utilize that area for other events, too.
Right, yeah.
Like what? Seating?
No, no, for more vendor, food vendors, weather sales, that kind of stuff.
Four, they got trucks.
Okay, as for the shelly.
I personally wouldn't be shocked.
Well, I, I talked to these, these guys are already, I'm not saying they're in, but I've met them personally. Husband-wife team, beautiful setup, and they told me everything they go through. And when they set up someplace, they actually, they inform all the state inspectors, they inform, you know.
You know, actually, statistically, the traveling carnivals are safer than fixed carnival.
Yeah.
Because their equipment gets broken down and inspected more often.
Yeah.
This is the theory behind it.
Right.
Yeah, and they, they, they know what to do, and that's, I go, what, what would I have to be involved in that? You know, we, we don't at all, we, you know.
Well, with a carnival that's only moving all the time, the guys get more practice taking it down.
And they get to observe the parts, but, but again, I, I think with that many people.
Because they would, they would contact you.
And the fans.
I guess they, they just wrap it.
And the musings, I don't know, that's a lot to talk through.
Needs a lot to bite off, so let's try, let's try to achieve a concert, and let's, I do want Charlie to chime in.
Well, no, and the only thing, and this is something that Ted has more experience about, I'm concerned on two areas, one, as far as I know, there's really only one main access in and out. I don't know, given your experience, what emergency access is, are possible that would work, but having, let's say, three thousand cars come out at the end of the evening and they're, or, and then, just maybe some coming in at the same time. So it just, the access of property itself is a concern. Then also, for 106 and thirty-six and 106 and fifty-eight, I mean, I, I don't know whether we've, I've not been here, so I don't know whether we've had any situations when the horse shows have been happening at those intersections. In that, are there traffic delays, impactors, if they're not, could maybe things play out?
We've, we've never had an issue with the horse shows. It's certainly been heavy traffic, but not an issue where it was locked down, no traffic. Obviously, we have the experience, we've drawn five or six, seven thousand people fireworks. So, so we have, you know, some, a lot of years of experience with that and moving those groups of people, so we kind of know what to expect.
And then the other folks, not that they have any say per se in this, kind of, climate needs to be, you know, the, because you're out, you're doing this right on the town border, it's gonna have secondary or tertiary effects for the town and its residents, they need to be at least in the loop, their DPW, their emergency management, place fire, et cetera, need to be in.
And I think my, I'm sorry, my first, my first guess is that we're gonna put this back on the event planner and let him show us what he has for a plan for these things. I'm sure that's in the background there. We'll see what he's got prepared, we'll review it and, and see if it's gonna work, and, and we'll go from there. So we'll, you know, obviously, we don't have the staff to do it, we'll put it back on him to, to provide us with, with that information, and we can see how it goes.
I have a quick question for Mr. Clausen, when you do your shows, is it the same as a concert where everybody shows up, or are there different shows throughout the day that your fluctuation of those residents, three, or those patrons coming and going is sort of split up over a number of hours?
Each event, probably seventy-five percent of the people come in the morning and leave the afternoon, and the rest kind of follow me.
Yeah, we were talking about towns that it may affect, I, I, I'm gonna guess that more than half the traffic's gonna head towards Kingston and Route Three. So, you know, they need to be putting the loop a little bit, just to know about the flow of traffic.
You know, we're involved in exits and ingresses probably before the town station is located, or, or the exit, or the people are coming that way, when we advertise it. But I personally would like to see, you, you get the information after you've met what our chief's, the, the inspector, my, all those little things, because you don't wanna lay out a plan, you don't want to be, you know, it's a little tough.
Exactly.
We did notify butters of this particular property, so I don't think anybody is here to talk about, from that standpoint, residents that live near Clausen's property. Just wanna make sure. So I think.
So we'll set another date to.
Yeah, I think the game plan should be, and Charlie, you can correct me, you should be able to get to those different town departments within the next two weeks and sort of.
Yes.
It might, my guess is your first stop will be the fleet chief and then the building inspector. And then you would come back to see us on the eighth?
Well, yeah, let's, two or three, fifteen.
Yeah, eight fifteen on, on, on March eighth. And then we'll have more, you know, hopefully we'll know by then that we can support it and, yeah.
You know, personally, I'd love to be able to support it, because it's pretty bad. I have three brothers and myself at the same time.
Yeah, eight fifteen on March the eighth, okay, so you'll be back as well.
I'll come back, absolutely. I'm on one.
Okay.
We don't wanna see him, we don't, we don't wanna see Bob.
No.
He comes with me.
He fed me.
Can you, can you get your contact information with the animal?
I have it down on Mr. Clausen's agreement, I have a phone number on there. Yep, name, his phone number.
And you have?
Mine.
Okay, Charlie, okay.
We would like to have phone numbers over here also.
You could know your number.
Yeah, you know me. It's certainly a worthy event, and, you know, if we can get all the logistics together, I wouldn't have a problem probably supporting it, but my ultimate goal here is to protect the town.
Exactly.
But I would like Mr. Redding's contact information as well, we know how to get.
Is he on the bottom?
He is, oh, he is, okay, yeah, this would help, right?
I was gonna slide mine over.
Yeah, I, I see, it's right in the bottom, okay, thank you. All right, so we'll see you on the eighth.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
How are you, sweetie?
Good, how are you?
Good. That's my bedtime. Hi. How are you? Two minutes tardy, that's crazy. No, I was, I had to park up this, that. I know, right? Like the crux of, yeah, really, that was the crux of. So I don't have anything to follow that, so, that was my bedtime anyway. Steve Tyler's gonna sneak up the pump. Oh, my God. No, I was just saying, I'll have the pumps, the tanks fall when that will get come along. That's impressive. And that's another thing that's good for our. Well, it sounds like it'd be good for the town, too, so. But you got a lot to work out, yeah. So you were here to talk to us about? Crazy license. So do you wanna tell us a little bit about? Oh, well, I guess, we're gonna, um, we're changing the way we work, we're gonna work smarter, not harder, so we're gonna do more used cars, and we have a couple of car lots that we do work for, well, we're gonna start doing a lot more work for us, so they could drop off ten to fifteen cars at a time. I, we had thought about getting on, I'd gone over to the station, you want that today, I talked to Officer Sterling about getting on Duty Hook, but he said that's kind of locked down right now, but maybe that will open up, we were thinking about towing for the town and putting, or towing in general, you know, a lot of customers of ours ask for towing. And we're gonna get into detailing cars as well, because there's no detail shops. We're, we're gonna get away from the heavy work, like, mowers, trainees, we're not getting any younger, so. And every year we do a car count, and we're always, we always seem to be over it. And it would just make, I don't think there'll ever be a hundred there, and we, we just towed out a full load of cars, but we're gonna get into newer cars. We're gonna work easier, I mean, our, my life, our life has changed tremendously, between my health and, and now we have temporary custody of our grandchildren, I don't know if you guys knew that. Pam knew that, but, you know, so I now have a two-and-a-half-year-old, an eighteen-month-old, and I'm gonna get the two-month-old as well. So I'm my grandmammy, yeah, so, um, I'm not gonna be working, I can't work the weekends or the late nights anymore, so we're gonna try and, we're just gonna try and work, we're, we're trying to work smarter, basically. And, you know, Steve can work the hours he used to work, and, you know what it is, help, you can't find help that you used to find, so, you know, we're gonna work with some of the schools around to see if we can get a couple of these kids in on, you know, co-op or whatever, so, you know, I didn't want, I know you guys are butters, and we're not gonna like, try to, because Jeannie's still to come, are you gonna open up a junkyard? No, no, we're not applying for a class-three license, so, um, the way the parking lot is now, anything that's not for sale is gonna be out back behind the fence, and anything, and then, obviously, people for repair or something gets towed in, it's gonna be, we're gonna try and keep it because I kind of like it open, so we're gonna wait till the weather gets a little warmer, seal coat it, you know, put in a fresh paint on coat, we're gonna clean the place up, we just, I just haven't been able to do a lot the last couple of years, so, I'm feeling good, so I might as well take advantage of it and move in, yeah.
Charlie, you been out there? Yeah, I mean, I haven't.
Yeah, I've been out a couple times, yeah.
But that, that's the problem, is right now they have too many cars, so either they're gonna have to reduce the stock that they have behind the fence.
I think we're like nine or eleven old right now.
Are they cars for sale or?
Well, they will be, yeah, there's some cars, you know, there's repaired cars, this, you know, people bring cars in for, they need a motor for their kid, or, or something done, they're not registered, they haven't got their license yet, so a lot of them are, you know, some of them don't even want us, so, we got rid of the bulk of those, so, and any heavy work that we do, we're stopping out, we have a guy that does a big, you know, the full work, we call it. So you just had a bunch of cars towed from your property, so how many are you left with today? Right now? I think there's eighty-one cars there right now, I think that's what I counted today. And you're looking for your permit to be increased to? Twelve hundred, seventy-five right now. Okay. I don't think it'll ever exceed a hundred.
You said you got rid of a lot of cars, how many cars did you get rid of?
How many cars did I get rid of? I think thirty-seven. You know what, honestly, I don't know, between, it was either twenty-seven or thirty-seven. I probably, I could get a list from Chalk and I'd say.
So that was well over a hundred, yeah?
We were, yeah, we were over a hundred then, yeah. If we do the permit of a hundred, you would absolutely have to stay at a hundred. Yeah, it would be a hundred, or below, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think what Kim is saying is that if two or three years.
Oh, I know, yeah, in two years I'm not coming for two fifty, yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah, exactly. Or, like, if. Or a hundred or go for a hundred fifty next year. I've never asked him.
Charlie comes down and you, you, you would stay for a hundred, and you got a hundred and five on there because that, and I know you wouldn't do it purposely for that stuff.
Oh, no, I know, I know. No, we just have to physically stay on top of it, you know, we're, we're saving a lot, we're saving a lot.
Have the grandkids go out there, they're all.
Well, they're boys, you know, we had all girls, now we have boys now, so, yeah, I don't think I'll make that next round, um, this will be the it for me, you know, we're just trying to get life, to make life easier, you know, we're focused more on the station, I'm gonna try and work most of my hours over there in our front. Kind of show, giving things easier for us. Tom, do you have any questions or comments?
I can't remember how big the property is, I mean, it's literally.
Pretty big, yeah, I guess two and a quarter, two and a half, I think it's a little over, I think it's a little teen bit over two and a half, yeah.
I, I remember it being, you know, not, not an acre.
And actually, we're gonna, um, we had talked together a lot about, you know, there's like a bunch of scrub trees that go, because they're, only the bittersweet is holding them up in the vines, we're gonna take that down and then we're gonna, I don't know, I think we're gonna reprocess or gravel there, I'm not really sure what we're gonna do. Like, right on the edge of, not where you guys are, out back on the side, you know, where my, you know, where Sin is? Yeah. It's like right there, not on your property, like, on my little top, like, there's like probably. Can I just hold you for a second? Oh, sure. Just because this is a formal here. Oh, yeah. Whoever asks a question has to ask through the board. Oh, sorry. That's okay, no worries. So I was just wondering where she was talking about. And you're, you have to stay. I'm Karen Farrell, I'm on, I know, my behind her. Yeah, so, I'm gonna open it up to the audience, but my question for you is, what are you doing to sort of block the view from the neighbors so that it could be aesthetically better for them to look at that property, for the people who are directly behind you? I don't think you can, can you see us? Yeah, I don't know, you know, I've never looked in your back, because you can't really get in your back yet, I can't see, I can see her window, is that you right, right behind me? So you have. I can't see Jeannie, I can see. The Fernandez, which is the white, and we're set back behind that, but both our properties encircle you? Yeah, there's one right, like, right behind that, put on a nice addition. That's definitely Fernandez. I don't think, I think I've not put it before. But, and then you're right behind it, and then there's one before, yeah, well, I, I don't know what we're gonna do up back, he might put a fence on, because we have a hill that's up high. He might put a fence above there, if, I mean, if that's what he, I, I was hoping Steve was gonna come with me, but someone's gotta watch the kids while I'm here, just kinda hoping it'll be vice versa. All right, so maybe at this point we can open it up to anybody in the audience that I know, Karen, who have any other questions or concerns. Well, I managed to ask her, but I didn't, um, so I'm just, with that property in mind and how they're all, like, are you re-assessing or? Oh, no, I think there are, I, like, maybe probably, I don't know, probably eight or ten years ago, maybe longer, the white, the whiteys came in and put the, those stone things in. The markers, we'll have to see exactly where they are, because everything's so overgrown, but I don't plan on, like, cutting up that, the only part that I'm talking about, not up back, is like this on the side, you know, with those if you're, if you're facing a micro ride and then you're looking out that way to the, you know, to like the field path, like your backyard, like, there's like these, there's like trees that are like dead there, those are the only trees I'm talking about, I'm not gonna go any further than that white, you know, my white vinyl fence goes, I'm not going in back any further than that, I'm just gonna clean out right there, because they're gonna fall, and they're either probably gonna fall, either they're gonna fall on the parking lot, or they look like they're gonna fall towards this, like, a little, um, I think it's a little like pond, like a turtle pond. Yeah, that's on. That's where I was putting turtles back out there. That's where I was putting turtles back out there.
That's between, between you and your son.
Yeah, but like right on the edge of my pavement is like one, two, three trees. So, because from the pavement, we probably have like, I don't know, like sixteen, fourteen feet over. But we'll, we'll do it well within our property lines. And I'll show you anyways, before it opens. And this is something that won't happen probably until spring, till everything starts, it's just so wet, but, yeah.
I, I'm sorry, that, I need to back up a little bit.
Oh, sure.
In the backyard, is there a fence there now?
There's a fence, that's about, like, where the building is, is a vinyl fence that goes on either side.
Yeah.
And this car is behind. And then back behind that, no. And then the hill, but we had a, but we...
There isn't a banquet there.
There are huge embankments, yeah. It goes up, I think like seventeen or eighteen feet, it's pretty high. And then all the scrubby trees that have grown up there, we're not gonna touch those, we'll let them grow. Because I, you know, I'm sure they don't wanna see us and we probably don't wanna, not that we don't wanna see you guys. We'll come up or beg us or something, but, um, but no, we won't, no. This is a neighborhood, we know. But, yeah, so if anything, it's gonna look better than anything, you know. Just like I said a few years ago, they'll look like Graceline, did I say that right? Yeah.
Do you have any other questions?
I haven't heard any music yet.
No, you won't hear any music, except for down the street.
Yeah, so the question is, will you be selling these cars? And yes, you will be selling.
Oh, yeah. We will be selling.
The, the license warning exists for that.
Yeah, we have seventy-five cars.
Which is specifically for the sale of these cars. That license warning exists, the question. These, there's a stipulation on the license that limits the number of unregistered vehicles, whether they're for sale or for repair or whatever the circumstances are. It's a limit to the number of unregistered vehicles, because I don't, if I'm counting vehicles, I don't wanna get into, "Is this car for sale? Or all about this car?" No, what we said was...
They're on a plate on them, yeah.
If they're on a plate or they don't have a proper inspection sticker, something like that, then they're counted as unregistered, whatever the circumstances, even if somebody says, "Well, they took the plate home with them, sorry."
But that's always honest.
They're gonna be counted. Under whatever, you know, whether it's under the limit of seventy-five now or any other limit. That's true for all class two license holders.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I was just trying to get, I was gonna stop by and... Oh, come by anytime.
So are there anybody else from the audience that would like, that are butters, that would like to ask any questions or have any comments or wanna support or not support the increase from seventy-five cars on the property to one hundred?
So, you know, things that I want the board to consider, they don't have to put these stipulations in for it all. Um, obviously, we have, we put in stipulation, we put in for everybody else, that a vehicle that's not for sale has, has basically a life of a year. So it's there when I count it in January, or in this case, on February, when we get to this coming December, I'm gonna be looking at it and saying, "Here's the bin, I took," because I took the bins for everybody else's. So if a car is there in February, when I check all the bins, and they were there in December, it's time to get it out of there. Because it's a life expect, the assumption is that if it's there for sale, if it's there for repair, you're gonna have a year to get that done.
Yeah, I think what we're gonna do, Charlie, is we're probably gonna have like maybe three lists, repair, detail, and used cars, and then it'll have a, it'll have a life date. I understand what exactly we're saying, it's not gonna hang, you know, be for sale for forty-nine years over there.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
That's the last part. But that's true, you know, we've done that with everybody else. I don't know whether the board wants to consider the limit on the number of vehicles outside the fence. One of the problems, obviously, you ran into is that, let's say, November, you basically used up all your space outside the fence, between the fence and the road. And even for just accessibility problems, emergency service, if something was happening with the building and such, you need access in those cases, and you might want to limit the number of vehicles that will be allowed outside.
Yeah, I'd like, uh, you know what, before you do that, I'd like to measure exactly how long that parking lot, but the thing is, probably have like maybe a double row of like an L shape, and then the rest of it'll be open except for the dumpster. And sometimes we'll have a, like a junk dumpster that will come to take...
Do you wanna reschedule this meeting?
Stuff away? No, no, I don't.
So do you, okay, so...
If I don't, if I don't have to, I don't.
How many do you think you have, well, how many cars do you think you have right now on that particular area, in that area?
Out front? Not many, yeah, there's probably twenty-six out front right now.
So it's pretty crowded, would you say, or not?
Oh, no, no, have you guys been by there?
No, I haven't been by there.
Oh, no, it's like a ghost town right now, yeah. Everybody keeps thinking we're going out of business, because there's no, there's nothing out there, no.
Okay.
Yeah, you could make a full loop if you wanted to.
No, I'm just trying to think if, if you don't wanna come back, like, we need to sort of put in our motion, a number of cars, and we wanna make sure that you...
Oh, you mean out front?
Yes.
For sale?
Well, whether they're for sale, again, the rule is, I'm not gonna worry about whether they're for sale or not. I'm counting vehicles.
Oh, so you wanna know how front, out front, on either side of the shop?
Correct, total number of vehicles outside the fence.
Well, I'd say you could put seventy-five vehicles real easy around the perimeter, but I'd say maybe sixty tops. You could put...
Okay, well, you're telling me that is sixty would be outside the fence and only forty inside the fence.
Oh, no, no. Only the ones out for sale.
Yeah, so we wanna limit the ones that are in the front.
Oh, I get you, we wanna know how many cars are physically gonna be out for sale. Physically out for sale, I'd say tops, maybe twenty-five, thirty?
So no more than twenty-five cars in, outside the fence?
Unregistered outside the fence.
You feel comfortable?
I can't control what is registered that's coming in or in the front, yes, yeah.
If a car is registered, has inspection, then I don't count it, it doesn't go against...
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, you feel comfortable with that number.
Yeah.
What would you rather plan it out and come to us?
Well, I mean, I don't know how far the distance, I'll say thirty, just to be safe. I, I can't see that ever even happening, but, um, I'll say thirty.
We don't want pigeon odor, unless you...
No, no, I don't want, that's fine, thirty's fine.
There's the usual stipulation that goes with all licenses also, that it has, the area has to be kept free of littering. We don't end up with piles of tires and auto parts and everything, but that's true of your place and a lot of other places, too, so.
We don't have any, um, yeah, I see, exactly same.
And then the other concern that's come up when people have asked me about the facility is, I think this is truer when you basically used up all the space, there seems to be people parking on the dirt lot across the street.
Oh, I parked across the dirt lot when the loads of car, when the fuel was coming in, and then we parked, we'd come back. And then the boys would park.
Well, because I've seen, basically, we saw vehicles there every single day.
Yeah.
It wasn't ju, it wasn't just when fuel was being delivered, it was everything.
But I would park across the street, um, and the kids that, that passed across the street.
Do you own that property?
No, 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 but I asked, um, George, if, he, he said it was okay, then I could do that.
Okay, well...
George owns it.
I think you want, okay, I think you wanna talk with Rob and make sure there are any zoning issues.
Yeah, well, we won't park across the street anymore.
I'm not saying it's wrong.
No, 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 that's fine, yeah.
If we get, if I, if everybody gets a proper permits and then somebody calls me up and says, "What's going on here?" I say, "Well, they got the proper permits, that, you know, what they were supposed to..."
Oh, yeah, no, we won't park across the street. We have, we have plenty of space now, so.
Well, that was one of the reasons for freeing up the space out there.
Well, now that you have the free space.
Oh, we have, yeah, we don't need to park across the street.
And what we can do is we can base it on thirty, which you feel should be enough, and I can imagine it would be more. But if for some reason you needed thirty-two, you could come back and talk to us. But I think the whole point of this meeting, and again, once we approve this permit, that you really have to stick to these numbers.
Yeah.
And it can't just be, as Troy said, five over, like, it has to be...
Oh, no, I understand, yeah.
Anybody have any other comments or...
I think you've said it for me. So Pam, do you have the stipulations in there, so thirty, no more than thirty outside the fence?
All right, um, those for sale.
The wild stallions run around the street.
The usual stipulations about the property being kept in good condition, also that the cars have to be out there within a year...
Yep, that's all we have, yeah.
Um, and then no parking across the street.
Yes, I get that, okay.
And that doors have to be especially nice to the board.
Yeah, actually, that would be nice.
I hope so.
I don't know, is that your deal?
No.
That's just always nice?
Yeah.
You know?
Try to stare at the painting once, man, and Jeannie.
So the next step would be if the board wants to make a motion with those stipulations? So moved, second.
Can we throw the discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Okay.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Then I can put my hands off, so I'm not gonna do it quite yet, but... No, no, I have, we have...
The license is already ready to go, but then we'll have to decide, so any sign of the next couple of...
Oh, no, yeah.
Okay, can we specify what kind of cars you have out there?
Free market.
Free market.
Thank you for coming in.
Alright, great, thank you.
Good luck with the grandkids.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
I'm exhausted for you.
You know, you've been down that road.
Yeah, I babysit three times a week.
Yeah, oh, you've been down that road, too, yes, I know. They are a lot of fun, though. Exhausting.
Well, all the reason I babysit is because I know nothing about computers and my four-year-old, and I know he knows more than I ever know.
Unbelievable, but they need cell phones. It's crazy. Alright, well, you guys have a good night, and you call me.
I'll call you.
Let me know, thank you so much.
Nice, thank you.
I'm holding. How are you doing? I'm good.
Okay, so we are, um, we have an eight forty-five road acceptance on Danson Lane and Warren Drive Street, two river farm. Sorry, I did that by accident.
It's got a bit full, it must be important. There's not much in there.
Okay. How are you?
Well, thank you, how are you?
Very great. So why don't you tell us what you want to make your presentation?
Oh, Brian Grady, the GAF engineer here for the review of the applicant. We've made application to have this subdivision roadway accepted, and I've received correspondence, and I believe you could have that as well, from planning board, from the review engineer, the associates. I believe it just comes down to, well, a couple of issues. One is, there's a little bit of lull that needs to be spread behind the berm on one side of the road, and that work will take place sometime early spring. And then the other remaining issue is, for the catch basins, they weren't able to get the hooded inserts in there, which had to do with the height of the pipe inside of the catch basin, there's not enough clearance from the top of the pipe to the bottom of the top of the catch basin to be able to get that in there. So in the absence of that, we can work with the planning board to see if there's other alternatives they wanna explore, or are they okay with that situation? There are hooded inserts inside half the catch basins. Everything goes to a water quality treatment system at the end of the, at the end of the flow before it gets discharged into the retention basin. So, you know, we can either leave it the way it is, or we can have a discussion with planning board and with the review board over here if you wanna pursue, try and find other alternatives to get something in there. Anybody from the highway department?
I spoke with Paul Bedore today. He is fine with the two roads as long as the stipulations from the planning board, that the planning board advised to develop for town.
So it meets all standards as far as Paul's concerned?
Yeah.
Any differences in writing here?
I talked with him this morning, I have not received anything in writing. We still have a second hearing coming up, we've been ahead with this one. We still have to have a formal hearing later, between now and town meeting.
Mr. Anderson, do you have any further comments from the planning board or any...
No, the subdivision looks pretty good. I mean, if we could just add a little bit of discussion, what maybe option might be for the water, but other than that, like you said, I mean, there is water quality taken care of further down the track on that.
Is there a maintenance plan for the water quality that can be given to the highway surveyor in the sense of August? If we're taking this over, they'll need to know how to operate that. I mean, maybe it's all mechanical or physical, but still at some point, as we found out with retention basins and such, there's always maintenance that you end up having to take over.
Yeah, we could provide this, for sure.
Tom, do you have any questions or...
No, I'd just like to see, you know, with the planning board, just resolve those couple of things. As long as the planning board seems happy about it, you know.
It's past my, you know, I thought of my, my area, I thought it's hopefully come up in highway and be given, but, but... As long as it meets all the standards and the required water drain and stuff is in place, I don't need to object.
Well, what I could suggest then is prior to the formal hearing, I can schedule any formal hearing with the planning board and go ahead and have a discussion with them and see if there's an alternative or if the status quo is accepted.
Alright, so we don't get a lot of...
Well, what, there's two things. One is, we did, in formally, you know, by the butters...
Oh, yes.
So if there are butters here who wants to speak about this, this is an opportunity.
They don't look like the butters. They don't look like people.
Do you have any comments or do you...
My question was answered.
Okay.
This is all the room behind the berm, that was it. Somebody elevated, had the same question.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So what the board would do tonight is vote to continue the process and that, we'll schedule a formal public hearing. Now, I know in terms of timing, we're gonna wanna get this done before the press in April. This does not mean, however, that all the work will have been done by the time of the press. There's still a vote in town meeting. If the work isn't complete by May ninth, the board has every right to revise that meeting, that's the case. The town meeting decided that I took some streets. We've done that before, we've had some...
We made the statement, so we voted tonight based on the statements that were given, that the rule is, has been worked on, and it's still small, but it's, it needs to be dealt with. So we voted tonight that it's well enough for the go-forward of the next meeting. And it's gonna get a good handle on it.
Okay, do you wanna make that motion?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Wish, which what I, I'll do, you know, is schedule the formal clearing for March twenty-second. We'll get a specific time and such set up and be notified. But I believe we have, for instance, there has been this two weeks notice and such to be certified. We don't need to go to the butters, those kinds of things like that, but it will give us more time to go over it.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, good luck. You want to talk about review dispatch?
Sure, we can talk about, yeah, yeah. So, um, Matt Tucker and I and Chief Broderick and Chief Barros did our field trip to Duxbury, um, yesterday, actually. And we sat down and we've talked to them about their proposals to take over our dispatch. We're sort of looking at the numbers and we're looking at, you know, the issue that we brought up, where it was going down. So that makes it a totally different, um, first department. So we are looking at the numbers and, um, do you wanna get specific?
Well, of course, well, we don't have to get into the numbers, because the numbers completely change. But just to give a little background for our TV audience, so many years ago, what kind of a planning council were working with Miller Foods and looking at the possibility of having regional dispatch, not one dispatch center for ten or twelve communities, but maybe one would be, another one would be four, et cetera. The only one that happened because of that was the town of Plinton contracted with Temple Duxbury to provide dispatchers. On the other hand, they basically had nothing there in Plinton, had been doing, working with the state police, whatever level the state police were providing at that point, and they were happy, happy to join up with another community. And they did it for virtually nothing, right?
Well, no, actually, none. Well, we talked about Plinton, so Plinton paid, I think the price for Plinton was somewhere around ninety thousand dollars. And so, um, the state person from number one came down and they were, you know, gave an incentive for them to be part of it. So they do pay a portion of that. And when we had our meeting with Duxbury, the chief Norr did say, "Well, you know, this is the price, but we think we can get this from the state."
Was that for her last thing, or was that...
Um, there's no guarantees. And again, you know, part of the discussion yesterday was, you know, and I think I explained this to you last time the subject came up, is that I had gone to the workshop and the big rumor was that, you know, single dispatch centers were gonna lose their grant money and, you know, I was told, "No, that was not true." Could it happen in the future? Absolutely. Do I think that's gonna happen the next, within two or three years? It's absolutely possible that it could.[1718.35] It's absolutely possible that it could. So my question is, if we're part of a three-town dispatch center, would the state at some point say, "You know what? You kind of have to be part of the seven now in order to be getting this grant money."
It's always fluid.
So, you know, on paper financially, and we don't have to get into all the numbers, would we save some money? We could absolutely save enough money that it's worth continuing the next step. Is that money always going to be there to subsidize? Would it have to be an ironclad agreement? So, I have a copy of Clinton's agreement. It's fairly, it's very light agreement, and there's a stipulation in there that either party could give a ninety-day notice to get out of the agreement. Not that complicated for Clinton, because if, for some reason, Duxbury said, "Yeah, they would just go back to the state," we, it would not be that easy for Halifax. So, you know, our agreement would look totally different than what Clinton signed, just based on our population. And so what Matt's getting together now is our call volume, because Chief Norde had made estimates on what he felt that our call volume was, but we want to really know, because the price that we were quoted was quite high considering.
How does he go about guesstimating what our call volume is, if I find out?
Um, yeah, you know, I know that we, that was part of our study a few years ago. When we were in that study, all of our, I think, call volumes were part of that study.
No, it just struck me as odd that somebody could just decide.
Yeah, so that was four years ago. So, I mean, I think we're pretty much close to that, maybe even a little higher, but, again, you know, is there technology that could assist us when we were to go dark? Yeah, there, if we, you know, we wouldn't have that much of a savings if we backfilled with clerical person to make up for the dispatcher for the difference in salary, we wouldn't be saving that much money. But, you know, is there technology that, you know, that person could go into the locked area and then a camera would be on them and that would notify, you know, our cruisers to come in? I mean, there's different things, but I think that we need to decide, you know, do we want our station dark? And I had asked Chief Broderick to really think about it over the next couple of days or a week, to say, "What does that mean for us? What are the different ways that we could, you know, if we wanted to staff it, what would that look like? What would the cost of that look like?" And Matt's sort of looking at call volume. And I do think that maybe the next step would be to sit down with 911 and Duxbury to say, "Okay, what would, what's the best you can do for us?" Without really, you know, when we had this conversation with Chief Norde yesterday, he said, "You know, I wanted to come to, you know, offer this to Halifax first, you know, we're going to be talking to other towns, but we want to offer it to you first." So, you know, I appreciate that, but, you know, again, this is something that we're just not going to go, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we're going to do it. We're going to analyze it as much as we can to..."
There's a cost to lay off help, too, right?
Yeah, we would have a factor in that, yeah.
Well, the only thing that really bothered me about, over the years, the biggest problem, because it started with the federal government to stake in and sheriff's department money to do a study on what it would take, you know, and buying the thing. And the biggest issue was, who does the hiring? Who does the hiring? How do you deal with pay?
Yeah.
You know, establishing the hours is going to be something that's sure this is going to happen, and who has all that authority? And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, a good thing, but those are some issues that came up, that I haven't heard anybody say that in fact that's been solved. I'd like to know just how well, well, Clinton had anything to start with. You know, they're not going to, they didn't really have anything in the station. Situ, was it situat, what's the...
Situat, hang on.
Situat, yeah.
Yeah.
I would like to know, you know, but those towns are sort of conjunctive.
Yeah, that's a little different. So they, they sort of went into it sort of like a regional district, and so...
Yeah, they're there.
They have different things. So my, my conversation with Chief Norde was, you know, I'm a numbers girl, and so again, there wasn't a lot of clear things in the Clinton's contract about what the price was based on. And so I, I would like to see ours based on actual call volume. I talked to them about actual costs being built in so that, you know, this would not become, you know, they said, "They're not a nonprofit, they're a nonprofit." When I said, "Don't, this isn't a moneymaker for you, but I can subsidize another department." I know it would be very easy to do that, but that if health insurance goes out because they're a 75-25 community, that, you know, those are higher expenses for us, and I understand that, you know, with services, prices go up, but that we are tied and that our agreement is really tied to actual cost. And, you know, the other thing that we need to be careful of if we even get to this agreement is staffing, like additional staff. Who has say in that? You know, when I look at the agreement between Clinton and Duxbury, you know, if there's a dispute on anything, then it goes to an advisory board, which consists of the fire chief from Duxbury, the communications supervisor from Duxbury, and then one person from Clinton, the chief from Clinton. So that would not look that way if it was a...
Kind of upside, I believe, isn't it?
So, I don't even know if they're still going to want us, but those are the things, because, you know, we all know from being part of a regional school district that you need to have, we have a really great agreement that a lot of people worked hard on to make sure that different questions that came up in our regional school district, that it was ironclad, and I would want the same thing for Halifax. So, I can say to you, is the savings enough for us to continue looking at it? I think so. I think we have to. On a personal note for some of the employees, some of our employees actually just work there part-time and would probably have jobs, so I don't know that we would have a lot of layoffs, which would, is at least helpful. Obviously, we want to think about that, but that can't be the ultimate decision maker.
Part of it for me is, I think we finally got a system that's working.
Yeah.
And I, I, I'm just feeling uncomfortable with going dark. I mean, the money would have to be significant, obviously we owe the residents the opportunity to save some money.
Yeah.
As long as the quality's there. Just out of curiosity, what's the population of Duxbury?
Duxbury is about as big as Kingston. I think they're like 12,000 or 15,000. So, yeah, again, the cost is there, but we would want assurances that the cost, like if we were being subsidized by the state, that, you know, because if this thing blew up, we would have to, we wouldn't have, where would we go? You know, because it's complicated, dispatch is complicated with EMD and, you know, certain qualifications, it's not essentially, essentially, you know, resetting up a dispatch center. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll continue, and I'll give you an update, and at some point again, you know, once we get to the point where, after we sit down with 911 to kind of talk to them about what kind of incentives they would give us, and we verify call volume, and we, and the chief thinks about, you know, the whole going dark thing, then we'll revisit it, we'll have, Matt can come and fire chief and Ted, and we can all talk about it then before we even entertain getting into the guts of what an agreement would look like. So.
Okay.
Did I miss anything, Ted?
No, but at this point, at this level, that's more than enough, yeah.
Yes.
What about, what about our equipment and stuff that's already, already clogged or taped, or perhaps that?
Well, our repeaters and antennas and all that stuff, just a quick update on that Laura, on the subject, with the equipment that was damaged over the project on the water tower has been replaced and is up and running, and is working well right now. We still have some new equipment to get the other small departments in town up to speed, but the water tower project repairs are done and good to go. Your question regarding that, we would have to maintain the equipment we have because it would still be used. Our repeaters and our antennas would still be part of the system that we would talk to as a partner in this regional group. I would suggest that we keep part of our dispatch center maintained also, just, just because, because we never know. Although personnel will be difficult to replace, at least we have a basic working structure there that we could use if we had to. So, it's, it's a, it's a big involved process, and again, one, one step at a time.
Yeah, this is not a quick decision. This is definitely...
I would, I would like to see someone on how they responded in case of emergencies, as far as like a storm we had, you know. They change over on...
I'm, I'm on the fence. You know, we need to look at the process and see how it goes. They seem to have a, a pretty well-run and organized setup over there. I'm sure if the town decided that was the right thing to do, that it, it would be okay, that their management and their, their department looks like it's, it's pretty well organized. So, I'd be comfortable with that, that side of it. But again, I, as the chairman said, I need to look at what's going to happen in my building, have a plan for that, and then I'd like to put it out to the population and say, "Look, this is my, my plan, is everybody in town comfortable with that?" You know, it's, because it's, when it comes down to us, we're a service-based industry, we, you know, we service the, the community, and they're the ones that need to be happy with what we're doing.
And at the same time, what do we do with management for our communications side?
Well, again, one step at a time, it's, it's, it's hard to say. It may just, the, the whole system may just dissolve, and what, what is, as it appears right now, is we would be just contracting a service from Duxbury. They would manage everything. They wouldn't, they'd take care of all the contracts. We would have no communications employees for the town Halifax.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, we're just, we're just contracting a service and we wouldn't have anything to do with that.
And they would take care of all the IT issues. Obviously, if there was a problem with our repeater, that would be something that we would need to do.
But I, I had the same concerns the chairman has about long-term...
Yeah.
...contract issues and how that would work out, so...
Yeah, no question.
If it dramatically changed or shifted down the road, our options are limited.
Right. And again, and as, as the chief said, I feel comfortable with their dispatch center. They have very qualified people, they're, you know, as I mentioned, some of our own dispatches work there part-time, so I have no doubt that we would get a good product from Duxbury, really. But, it's logistics, and, you know, do, you know, as we said the last time the subject came up, is it the future? It could be the future. We may force be forced at some point. So, you know, it's important to keep looking at, and again, we're looking at it not because, and during that meeting, I echoed what you just said, is that we're happy with the performance of our dispatch center, but if it wasn't for the financial incentives, I don't think we would be looking at it.
I mean, I've worked on this system, come from Illinois, that they have a lot of regional setups out there, you know, satellite offices here and there.
Yeah.
So, if it's workable, I'm just concerned with, you know, maybe I've been doing it too long, just nervous about giving up all control.
Yeah.
Oh, something that's so imperative and important, citizen, someone go up and knock on the door because they don't have a phone, maybe an accident knocked on the door and it's dark?
Again, these, like I said, these are, these are the issues that I have to work out, present to you and the community, and make everybody comfortable with that.
Yeah, that would be my only concern when it's happening. That we would run that.
That and the fact that there isn't really familiarity with the communities they're servicing. I mean, you know, even the pronunciation of streets, and I've had incidents myself where I've been sent to the wrong place, not from our guys, because people don't understand the town.
Right. They don't know where the water and property is.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, yeah. All right, so we'll keep you updated, and when we're ready to, you know, have a meeting, and we'll have, we'll give you more information about.
Do you want to talk more about moncondent and the legislation?
Sure.
Well, we do not want to, but...
No, we're going to talk about moncondent. So, on Friday, DEP had an update for us of their progress with city of Brockton. And on the call was Tom Coulter, Senator Mike Brady, DEP, Paul Collis, and Halifax. And so DEP started off with, you know, we had two meetings with Brockton. Tom Coulter was not very thrilled that it's, you know, been so many months and only two meetings, and not a lot of progress was made. So he said that he was prepared to, and already talked to the Speaker of the House and that the, and the President of the Senate about introducing legislation now that would force Brockton to go with MWRA. Right, you have the election? You know, that was the first I had heard that Tom was exploring something like that.
Yeah.
He wanted to get some feedback from DCP to say, you know, "This is what I'm thinking about doing, and, you know, should I wait till we make an agreement?" And DEP said, "No, I mean, if that's what you want to do, then we need to file that legislation, and we'll continue to work with Brockton." So, Tom Coulter had asked the Plumb County Water Commissioners, Central Plumb County Water Commissioners, send a lot of support to him, saying that this is something that they want us to do. And I asked Tom if that was something, if we had a letter from our board supporting that legislation, that, and he said, "Good." So I would...
And it might force Brockton to give it off and die, and do something, take some type of action, and just like put the legislation in, and do the change for them.
Yes. I think that, you know, yesterday I went to one of the Central Plumb County Commissioners' meeting, and Brian Creedon was there, one of the water commissioners was there, and he had a copy of Charlie's letter, not the latest one that he sent, but the one from June, and he wanted to express how disgusted he was with the town of Halifax for even thinking that we would want Brockton to pay for the water, the, you know, for the treatment of our pond, since it's, the condition of the pond is our own fault.
Our own fault.
Yes, yes. And I explained to him that he needed to get educated. He didn't even know that...
Very much educated, yeah.
Yeah, so this is what we're dealing with. So, yes, I would like to send a letter of support, because as Pine Dua said from a Jones River watershed, yesterday, like she was making a plea to the Brockton Commissioner, who said, "Listen, this is years of frustration. We're, we keep asking you, we get no response." In fact, that gentleman was complaining that, you know, about, you know, not knowing about things, and the water commissioner says, "We sent you, we send you a weekly email. Do you get a weekly email?" So, you know, I want Brockton to have drinking water, I'm not against the residents of Brockton, but we can't continue...
They need to step up.
Right. So I would ask that the board make a motion to support the legislation.
Second.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion. All those in favor?
All right.
So when Mike Brady was in the, sorry, Senator Brady was in the room yesterday, I thought on the call he was supportive of it, but yesterday I said, "We know the senator is supportive of it," and he said, "Well, no, 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 I don't know how I feel about it."
Well, this is the problem with gerrymandering, when you get a district, his whole constituency is Brockton.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get into that discussion, I just wanted to...
I understand.
I just wanted to mention to you that he was, may not be a hundred percent for it, but I do think that we need to, we need to pursue it, yeah. And he mentioned that he was trying to get a meeting together with, with the mayor and the water commissioners. And as you know, I sent the mayor of Brockton an email, because he had asked me to, so that maybe I could, you know, I still had crickets, I haven't heard back from him. And I, you know, I pulled Senator Brady aside after the meeting, and I said, "You know, I want to feel like we're represented as well." I mean, I had wanted us to have that meeting with the mayor, and now he's trying to arrange the meeting with the water commissioners. But I don't mind that so much, because the water commissioners understand, and they are the authority, even though during this meeting yesterday, they were directing Brockton to, to, to do something, and Mr. Creedon said again, "I don't think that you have the authority over our, what we do." And he was reminded that that body does have that authority, so. Anyway, Charlie did miss anything?
See how things continue to play out.
But Charlie did send that letter.
Yep. So we stay there, all this, super nuts. A few other things, I would like the board to open the special town meeting warrant from a ninth, with the deadline of Monday, March 21st, which would be the date before the second selection's meeting in March.
Okay.
I know we haven't closed officially the warrant for the annual, but this gives everybody a month. Okay.
So, do you have a motion to open?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. And just so the board is aware that on...
Close on...
March 19th? Yes. Just so, just so the board's aware, the Council on AG project for getting an architect the notice for the request for qualifications will appear in central register on March 2nd, will be in the newspaper this coming Friday, will be a walk-through on Saturday, March 19th, and then the submitter deadline is April 7th.
Awesome.
So that is moving forward. And I think outside of going into executive session, I don't have anything else, I don't know what the board made out.
Okay. I don't know.
None?
No. Okay. So we will be going into executive session, and we have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of...
Collecting bargaining with patrol officers, sergeants, firefighters, highway and dispatchers, and also update on the whistle versus Halifax in that case.
Troy?
Unless we have...
All right, second Matt, and then I'll do the rule.
Second.
Troy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kim? Yes, okay, thank you, everybody.
And we'll have to come back.